Session of the Midvale Planning Commission meeting, we'd like to start our meetings by doing the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you can stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can get a roll call vote for attendance.
Chair Erickson?
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Tippett is excused, Commissioner Snow is excused.
Yes.
He sent an email. Commissioner Lakey?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Casparian?
Here.
All right, thank you. Did we all have a chance to review the minutes that were emailed?
Yeah.
This week?
I did.
Yeah, any comments?
No.
Looks good.
They look good, pretty clean?
Yep.
Yeah. Entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from October 9th, 2024.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes, thank you. All right, on to the first item on the public hearing portion. We have the transportation element of the general plan, which includes the impact fee, fees, facilities plan, the general plan element covers the entire city of Midvale. And I'm thinking Vendelain is presenting?
I'll introduce.
Okay, he's introducing.
This is the transportation plan that we've been waiting for. And you've had some involvement in it. And this is now the culmination of it. It's your chance to weigh in on the document and forward it to the city council if you so choose. Charles Allen is here, he's from Parametrics. He's the lead consultant on this. And I wanted to, before he starts, I just wanted to first of all say thank you for the work that they have done for us. And I also wanted to give you a potential motion.
So early.
So, and then Charles has a presentation where he goes through all the details, the methodology and the recommendations.
Thank you.
I'm debating whether to take the jacket off, I think I'll keep it on.
Comfort's important. We're a learner.
Great, great, well, thank you, it's a pleasure to be here again. My name is Charles Allen with Parametrics, we're the lead consultant firm on this project. It's been a pleasure to work with Vendelain and other Midvale City staff. We've worked with them on many projects and it's just always a pleasure to work with this group. So I'll present several elements of. Okay. I've got a backup if we need it, I've got a flash drive and I have my laptop we could plug in. So if those options, if that option runs out, we can go to backups. So the presentation, I'll go over some of the highlights of the Transportation Master Plan, it's a big document, as you've gone through, you've probably seen lots to discuss. We'll just talk about some of the key highlights and some of the key features. So, one thing to know, this is Midvale City's first transportation master plan ever adopted, so we're excited to be a part of that. Typically, a transportation master plan is a guiding document for a city that sets forth the transportation projects and policies, oftentimes looking a couple decades into the future, 20 or 30 years. And this one is Midvale's first and it covers that timeframe. Oftentimes, the transportation master plan also includes the capital facilities plan, that's often a big focus, is one of the roadway projects we're going to do. Midvale City's is a little bit unique compared to some other areas, so, for example, looking for the bullets, they're going to be there. Are you opening it like directly from Google or downloading it and then opening it?
I have not downloaded.
Okay, that might work a little bit better, because there's some text on those slides, unless I converted the font to white font. What you see in a lot of communities, especially growing communities, that are seeing a lot of development, is these transportation master plans focus on the roadway projects that communities need to build, they're just trying to catch up with all the development that's occurring, so they've got lots of new roads to build and lots of roads to widen. Midvale City is largely built out, so our focus is a little bit different and more unique, where their transportation network is pretty mature, there's lots of roads, we're built out, not a tremendous amount of growth we're expected to experience. So we can focus a little bit more on providing a balance between vehicular travel and other modes of travel, like walking and biking. And in its presentation throughout the document, you'll see that many times when we use the term "active transportation," which is a term for walking and biking, so that's what we mean by that. So, this plan seeks to really find that balance between the vehicular network and the pedestrian and bicycle network. And we'll see that as we get into some of the recommendations of the plan itself. This is the outline of the presentation today, we've got these six topics, we'll start with goals, move into existing conditions and future conditions, talk about roadway cross-sections, talk about project cost estimates, and then the performance report card. So first of all, goals, a couple elements here from a public survey that we conducted are really insightful. We asked the public what are some of the following modes of transportation that you use, a 93% drive alone, and people could select more than one, it wasn't just one or the other, so that's why these totals add up to more than 100%. But we do see these other modes come up, like tracks and front runners there at 65%, bus at 22%, carpool 48%, etc. Then what are the issues you're most concerned with in Midvale City? And we see a wide variety of concerns people have, there is traffic congestion, air quality, there's also safety and biking and walking options, so a very broad set of interests that we heard the public have a concern in Midvale City. And then what types of improvement projects are most important to you? And we had lots of responses, sidewalks came in, 66% respondents included sidewalks as part of their concerns, bicycle facilities at 50%, transit choices 41%. So again, a very broad set of opinions and interests for people, what types of improvements they want to see. It helps set the stage for the goals of the plan itself. Another resource we evaluated are the existing plans and recent plans that have been conducted in Midvale City, such as the general plan itself, as well as some more focused plans that have been completed recently. And we mined the goals and objectives from these plans and compiled them, looked for patterns, combined that with the public input, and with that together, we developed these four goals for the transportation master plan itself. And these are goals that we presented to the city council in November of last year and bounced it on the goals off of them at that time. So these goals focus on things like increased quality of life in Midvale through comfortable human-powered and motorized access for everyday trips, such as recreational healthcare, employment, culture and community amenities. Support human-powered access to neighborhoods, city centers, parks, gateways, redevelopment, target areas, etc. So, we've tried to really encompass a lot of things in these goals and make sure that we're reflecting that public input, as well as what we've seen in some other Midvale City plan sets and documents. So those are the goals of the plan. Now a little bit on existing conditions, this sets the stage for what we have now and where we might want to go to get to that future condition that matches those goals. One of the things we look at in an analysis for a city is the level of service, which you've probably heard as developers have presented traffic studies for you, it's a measure of how well an intersection or roadway operates on an A to F scale, A being the best and F being the worst. And typically, we use level service D as the benchmark for what we want to achieve. It's a good balance between operations and not overbuilding and facilities that are too big. So these are the, this is the existing level of service in Midvale City, we see a variety of colors, the greens mean level service A and B, and then as we get to the red colors, that's level service E or F, so that's operations that are below the acceptable level. We took a look at crash data as well to make sure that we're understanding the safety needs of the city, this is a heat map of crashes, so the brighter colors represent where we have more crashes, and then the bluer softer colors or more muted colors represent less frequent crashes. This is a pretty typical pattern, the busiest roads tend to have the most crashes, that's where the most cars are, and we see a lot around, you know, Fort Union and I-15 and Fort Union and State Street, etc. But this was part of the analysis of what's going on in Midvale today, how can we make things better? This is the active transportation network, so looking beyond sidewalks, what are the dedicated active transportation facilities? And they're represented by the green lines in this map, which are the multi-use paths or cycle tracks, just dedicated facilities for walking and biking. And there's some really clear patterns from this map in that they're clustered over on the west side and there are very few other facilities. So we have our work cut out for us, and with the goals that we've established and the desires for Midvale City, there's a lot to do and a lot we can do to improve active transportation in the city. Now we look to future conditions, what's predicted for Midvale and what types of projects will help us achieve our goals. This is the level service analysis for the year 2034. So this was developed using a travel demand model, which is a region-wide model that predicts travel patterns 10, 20, sometimes 30 years into the future. This is the 10-year outlook, why did we go 10 years? This is important for an impact fee analysis, which we'll discuss a little bit later, but we can take a look at the future traffic volumes on our roadways and evaluate what the level service will look like. Here is 2050, and this is what helps us establish many of our long-term needs, so things continue to grow, some places there's more growth than others, and we get to see a little bit more of the oranges and reds creep in as we jump to that 2050 condition. So with that in mind, understanding those roadway capacity needs and looking towards what other regional plans have occurred in the area, we can start to identify what are some good projects to include in this plan. So, this is a representation of the regional transportation plan for 2050 developed by the Wasatch Front Regional Council, and these are the roads, projects that they have in Midvale City. The ones in purple are operations projects, generally doesn't involve any type of widening or roadway reconstruction, so they tend to leave roads in place, they're somewhat undefined in their plan as to what that means, it could be signal operations improvements. The red projects, those red lines are the widening projects that they have in their plan. And then the greenish-blue ones are new construction projects that they've identified in their plan. So with those in mind and looking at the capacity needs of the year 2050, we've developed this roadway project list in the transportation master plan. So here's seven projects that we have to address those capacity needs and also to be compatible, well, I don't want to say compatible is the right word, but you know, we took cues and guidance from that regional plan as well and kept the projects that we think make the most sense for Midvale City. So, some of these projects are widening, others are to, well, they're mostly involve some sort of widening, some are accomplished through maybe partial widening and restriping, such as that 7200 South Fort Union project near I-15 for just that westbound direction. But we have widening these roads, giving them typically an additional travel lane in each direction. The 700 West project up near the Winco, that is a project to complete, we call a five-lane cross-section, so today it's five lanes, it narrows down just after the Winco area, and this is a plan to, a project to complete that cross-section. So, seven projects, again, this is a little bit different than a lot of cities' transportation master plans, where they have dozens and dozens of projects as they try and keep up with the big developments that are occurring. Midvale City, we're a little bit more targeted on what these projects are, and so, and these aren't necessarily put into a groups, you know, tiers of timeframes, which other plans do, sometimes they're like, here's the 10-year project list, here's the 20, here's the 30, these are just all together, since there isn't a huge amount of them. And this is what level service looks like with these projects in place, so again, taking that regional travel demand model, saying, what if we do all these projects, what's the result? There's some shifting in traffic volumes based on these projects, and some roads get a little bit better, some actually maybe degrade a little bit, just because traffic's moved around somewhat, but overall, there's a net improvement for the city. We spent quite a bit of effort in this plan to define what should be the active transportation improvements going into the future. This is the set of projects that's in this plan, and you can see it's a pretty comprehensive set of lines and dots on this map, these are all active transportation projects of some kind in the city. They include linear projects, so that's adding things like bike lanes and shared-use paths and markings to roadways themselves, in addition to some spot projects, and these often include crossing improvements, like a crosswalk upgrade or adding various types of signs and markings to help make it easier to cross roadways. These projects are split into two phases, we call it a priority phase and a secondary phase, and this was determined through a quantitative process where we took metrics about projects, how much pedestrian and biking traffic they're expected to serve and to generate, we call that a mode shift analysis. And we took a look at the projects that already have some funding required from other sources and gave them a little bit more priority, since there's already some dollars programmed for them. And then we also measured things like access to opportunity, we want the projects that are close to major amenities like schools and shopping centers and recreational amenities to get more points in the scoring system. And then we took into account safety, as well as regional connectivity, to develop this overall project prioritization score. So those scores in mind, we put them into those two phases, priority and secondary. This is just the priority transportation projects, and they're color-coded according to the project type, so whether it's a bike lane or a buffered bike lane or a shared lane markings, they all have their own unique color in this plan. So, looking at each road individually and the amount of traffic on the road and the roadway width and the expected active transportation demand, we tried to match up what's the best type of facility for that particular road. So should it be a bike lane or should it be a separate path, etc., those were the factors that went into creating this set of projects. So these are the priority ones, higher priority, and then the secondary projects are indicated here on this map. So, the roadway project list is pretty small, but our active transportation project list is pretty big, there's lots we can do to improve the situation in Midvale City. Yes, question?
What's the difference between buffered bike lane and separated bike lane?
Both have some type of separation, the buffered bike lane is typically like a painted separation, you just kind of paint, you know, a three or four-foot buffer, and then a separated can have some type of physical vertical separation, sometimes like a raised median, or it might sometimes even be above curb or behind curb and above the roadway. Thank you. It's a great question. As an industry, we're looking for more and more ways to make comfortable active transportation decisions, so there's a lot of creative options that have been developed and hence lots of different classifications of different types of bike facilities. But we're striving for high comfort and matching the type of facility that fits best with a particular roadway. Here's an example of a project, and for those priority projects, we've developed more detailed information. So in this case, this is a project on Main Street from Center Street going south to the city limit, and this project is proposing to put in those buffered bike lanes. So there on the bottom of this slide, you can see the cross-section and how a buffered bike lane is created with that striped separation. In this case, it also has some, could have some flexible delineator posts to provide even more separation than just the paint.
You should get Sandy on board so you can continue it down to 90.
You know what, that's.
It stops.
Yeah.
I run there, that's why.
It's a really good point, we can't control what the neighboring cities do, but we can try to be compatible with what their plans are. So, major regional facilities like the Porter Rockwell Trail, you know, we're trying to link up with what neighbors are doing, and so there's some continuous facilities going from city to city. So, in the appendix of this plan, there are these detailed reports for the priority active transportation projects, just to help us get a little bit more information and make them more ready to implement. Here's another example, this is close by, this is on Main Street. In this case, instead of a, you know, separate bicycle facility because of the roadway width and the low volumes and low speeds, in this case, the proposed project is shared lane markings, sometimes called shareos, which is just a clever word melding of sharing and arrows. And so you see these sometimes, they're just these markings in lane to help indicate to drivers, this lane is shared for both bicycles and drivers. So, roadway cross-sections, Midvale City's current cross-sections are detailed in the city's standard engineering drawings, and so this is the figure pulled from those drawings, it's a roadway diagram with these dimensions marked off in letters, and then there's this table zoomed in here that identifies what are these different street types consist of, you know, the right-of-way width, the pavement width, the park strip width, the sidewalk width, etc. And so in this plan, we decided it'd be really helpful to, one, provide graphical examples of what these mean, and then, second, try to make them more useful by developing these cross-sections into examples of how each of these street types can be combined with a different bicycle and active transportation facility type. So for example, what does a minor street look like if we have a bike lane? What does it look like if we want parking instead? What does a collector look like if we want a separated bike lane? What does it look like if we want a turn lane instead, or maybe both together? So, in the plan, we've taken these different classifications and we've merged them with the different active transportation facility types, so here's the little menu, minor arterial, we've got a minor arterial with the buffered bike lane and one with the separated bike lane. The feeder street, the 60-foot feeder street, we've got an option for a shared lane and one with the bike lane, one with the buffered bike lane. So, there's lots of combinations, I'm not going through them all tonight, they're all in the document, but just a couple examples, here's that minor arterial, and we've got, you know, an option with the buffered bike lane on the top, and then we've got one with, you know, a behind-curb bike lane down on the bottom. And then sometimes, because there's even more flexibility often desired from project to project, we have, you know, on the right side of the image, we have one option, on the left side of the image, we have another option to just illustrate, what does this look like if you just have standard lanes versus a bike lane, or if you have parking or no parking? You know, from context to context, you might want to make different decisions about what you actually implement. So here's some options for 66-foot collectors, we've got three lanes for three of these, meaning two travel lanes and a center turn lane, one of them, there's no center turn lane, which provides a little bit more room for a buffered bike lane. And then here is the 50-foot minor street, a couple options for it, you know, one with bike lanes on the side, one with those shared lane markings instead. And then we're also showing park strip widths and sidewalk widths for each of these. They are, the cross-sections are aspirational in nature, they're meant to be something to help us plan and try to achieve better roads, let me go back to this. Oftentimes, we don't have the means to go out and just change our roads wholesale, but when reconstruction projects come or when new roads are built, we can look to these cross-sections and say, okay, if we want to build a collector, this is the menu of options that we'd like it to be built as, and so let's see what we can fit in for this particular location. You know, is it parking, is it bike lanes, is it a wider sidewalk or park strip, we've got different options to try and see if we can achieve each one of those. So, next up, project cost estimates. For all the roadway projects and all of the priority active transportation projects, we've developed some detailed cost estimates to help the city move towards trying to secure funding for these as the time arrives. So these are all in the appendix of the report, you can look at them and take a look at what the estimates are. Midvale City's done a good job of securing funding through lots of different types of sources and different types of projects. So another thing we discuss in the planner is what are some of the funding sources that can be pursued to pay for these projects? This is a list of funds that are provided through WFRC, there's a congestion management air quality program, some kind, sometimes called CMAC, the transportational terms program, and each one of these has different funding amounts and different project target types that qualify, and that's discussed in more detail in the report. UDOT has a good set of funds, their main was the Transportation Investment Fund, which funds capacity projects on state highways. They've also, in the past several years, developed a lot of creative funding sources, the TIP Active, the Transit TIF, and then the Active Transportation TIF. It can be difficult to keep track of what each one is, but the bottom three are used for a lot of active transportation and transit projects. In fact, Midvale City has been successful in getting some Transit TIF projects for these first-last-mile activities in the city. So, the city's done a good job of securing those, and there'll be more opportunity going forward. There's also a lot of federal grants that are available, they come with their own set of acronyms and have their different requirements and funding cycles, and we've got details about those in the report. One of the common sources of transportation funding for a city is impact fees, and we took a look at impact fees and what would it take to set up a transportation impact fee for Midvale City? If you're not familiar with them, it's a, impact fees, a one-time fee charged to new development to offset the costs for capital infrastructure to support that development. And in order to adopt impact fees, you have to complete a required set of studies according to state code, one's an impact fee facilities plan, an IFFP, and an impact fee analysis, an IFA. As part of the transportation master plan, we set the capital facilities plan and determine which projects are eligible for impact fees, and from that point, you can determine the costs that are eligible to charge for development and then set that rate schedule for impact fees. The requirements for a project to be impact fee eligible is that it has to be within your tenure planning horizon, so remember, we're looking at that 2034 level service condition, that's to help us determine which projects are needed within the next 10 years. They must be in an adopted plan, so we're adopting a transportation master plan, so that'll help cover that. They have to be added capacity projects, and they can't be used to address existing deficiencies, and they don't apply to state roads, you can't charge impact fees for projects on state roads. So as I mentioned before, we have a small set of projects to work with, because there isn't as much development here as in some of the fringe communities along the Wasatch Front. So we have a small set to work with, and then four of the projects are in state facilities, so they're not eligible to charge impact fees for, so that leaves us with just three more. But when we look at that 2034 capacity needs list, they don't have a failing capacity, so that means they're not impact fee eligible. So our last hope for projects is washed away with these three, unfortunately not being impact fee eligible. So, we talked with the city quite a bit, and we're. So we, we talked with the city quite a bit and we're like, well, you know, there, there is maybe another way, kind of a long shot through some buying capacity method that's typically not used by itself. It's usually used in tandem with charging for projects. But unfortunately, none of our projects meet the eligibility criteria for impact fees. So we don't have a, an impact fee rate that we can set up for Midvale City. But we looked at it. It is a funding source. Unfortunately, it's not going to apply well to Midvale City at this time. So the last thing, the performance report card. We wanted to set up a means whereby we can track our progress over time. It's nice to have a plan, but how well are we executing and implementing that plan? So we crafted several performance metrics that are based on these four categories, which mirror the four goals that we presented earlier in the presentation. So these four categories, we set up, okay, here's ways that we can measure each of those categories. And we've set up this report card with metrics that the city can update every two years with a fresh set of data to see, how are we doing? So how are we doing with crashes? Is it decreasing or are they increasing? What about traffic volumes? Are they staying stable on our busy roads? Are they going down on roads where we might be trying to shift traffic volume and make a more comfortable pedestrian environment? How are our travel times doing? Are they getting longer to cross the city? Are they getting shorter? How many, what's our mileage for dedicated active transportation facilities? We know how much we have now. Have we increased that as we've been able to construct projects over time? And then some other interesting metrics like access to opportunity. There's a tool from WFRC to measure, what's the overall ability for individuals to access amenities, grocery stores, recreation centers, given your existing transportation network? As we increase our connectivity, that should get better. And the activity, access to opportunity should increase for the community. So we've filled this out with current day metrics, and it can be, you know, updated over the years. And we can see how we're doing and, and revise our plans accordingly if we need to change direction. So that concludes the material that I presented today, an overview of the Transportation Master Plan, and, and happy to address any other questions.
I had an interesting question. The 7800 South corridor in the level of service, you know, was an E or F, and it erodes in 2050 as well. What's driving that one segment of E and F on 7800 South and like 1000 East? Any ideas?
Let me jump over to it.
Yeah, it was like maybe slide eight or so. It was in the beginning.
Are you referring to like 2050 year or 2030?
I mean, there's a, there's a spot in current, and then it took a go.
Let's go back to current here.
Right there. Yeah. It's interesting, like it just doesn't seem to fit.
Are you talking about on the east side?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. So what happens here, this is an interesting one. We considered putting a project here because most of 78 is a three-lane road. It's got the center turn lane. And then for just a brief section, it drops down to two lanes. You lose the center turn lane. So in our planning methodologies, we lower the capacity. We say it has a lower capacity because it doesn't have that center turn lane.
Okay.
And so that's why with similar volumes, it gets level service D for that section without a center turn lane.
That's helpful.
So, you know, we talked to the city, we're like, Kate, do you want to add a center turn lane? And there wasn't a huge appetite to take that on.
So just a comment. I noticed a lot of the proposed projects were on our periphery. They were what Matt was talking about, going into our neighboring cities and how that could be organized, I think, a bit. Because when you get to that, you realize where the city line is when things like this happen. And you're like, suddenly this thing that I love, I don't love anymore.
Yeah.
Because you're in Sandy.
Yeah.
For instance.
For instance.
Yeah, so like many of these projects, well, I could try and avoid hitting Wendell in the eye with this laser. But yes, this is Midvale's portion of a larger regionally planned project, right? So in reality, would Midvale City take this on by themselves and just build this small piece? Probably not. Typically, these, this type of project is funded by UDOT or WFRC. And they'll do a, you know, they'll make the project make more sense by doing a longer extent.
They'll do the legwork.
Yeah.
And as an example, some of the projects for which we have funding, there's actually some coordination, for example, with Murray City on the northern edge. As part of the RACE grant, there's some funding, for example, on 700 West to go into Murray.
Yeah.
And so we've actually already talked to some.
Okay.
Charles, maybe you could talk just a little bit about changes on Center Street and how those affect the system, and the same with possible changes on Holden Street.
Yes, yes. So there's, both Center Street and Holden Street had an active transportation project to narrow lanes and create either a side path or protected bike lanes. And so that, within a travel lane being taken, that means less capacity than, you know, different traffic volumes. So we've done, as part of this analysis, we did specific focused investigation of what that would mean for the city. So I don't have a good graphic in this presentation, but our 2050, I think I went too far. Here we go. So these 2050 results assume that, that Center Street project is in place where we've done a road diet. And we see a couple of things happen. One, there's, there is a shift in traffic volumes. So we see, and that's a specific graphic in the Transportation Master Plan, but there is a shift to use other east-west corridors like Wasatch and Fort Union. And the same with Holden where, when we convert a travel lane to a bicycle facility, then we see a shift in traffic over onto Bingham Junction Boulevard. And, you know, traffic tends to be a, an evolving and adaptive creature. People always look for the best path, and we use models to try and predict what kinds of decisions we'll make. And we look at and say, okay, are we okay with that, that predicted effect? And in a lot of cases, yes. Sometimes it's like, well, maybe that makes things a little bit more difficult for others. But in the case of like Holden Street, if more traffic shifts to Bingham Junction, and talking with staff, we all felt like, yeah, that kind of fits with the goals of the city. That's where we want to see the higher traffic volumes over on Bingham Junction. So if we encourage more trips to take that path, then that fits well with what, what the city's looking for. So, and then of course, there's, with reducing travel lanes on a facility and adding, you know, a separated path, we expect there will be some slower speeds, the roadway will be a little bit calmer. And if that fits with the vision for that particular roadway, that's a great thing, and we're excited about that. Other questions?
I don't think so. Very thorough.
Yeah.
And there's a lot more in the packet. Yeah.
Yes, yeah, the full report.
I, I started scrolling through and I didn't realize how long it was, so.
Right, right.
That's a good thing.
Good, good. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your attention today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so this is under the public hearing. So I'm going to open this up for public hearing. Are there any comments?
Seeing there are none, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Attorney?
Yeah? So we need a motion. Are we able to bring up the one that?
Do we need our attorney?
No.
Do we need you? We do.
We always need you, but do we want you?
Oh, okay.
Yes, we do.
This is a legislative action, so you have broad discretion in choosing whether to recommend approval or denial. That's it.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion. I move that we recommend approval of the transportation element of the general plan with the finding stated in the staff report.
I second it.
Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Chair Erickson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Littke?
Yes.
Commissioner Casparian?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. So I think next, this goes on to city council.
Yes, so it will move on to city council, and when they approve it, then it will become part of our general plan.
Awesome. That's a first.
Yep.
Awesome. So next up on the agenda, we have a discussion, the View 78 Concept Plan, located at 795 West Ivy Drive. I think Wendell is presenting. Introducing.
So this is a little bit of an unusual item because our ordinance in the zone in this particular project requires a basically a work session. And this is the language in the ordinance, so your role is to basically give some informal feedback so that the developer can hone in the application. And once this has happened, then they have the option to submit a complete application, and then we would go to a large-scale master plan approval and go through all the steps that are involved. And the developers here, and then they will present.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Wendell. My name is David Dennison with Gardner Company. Just a quick history. We, I actually came to the commission about, it's been last, it was last year, early last year. And we had submitted a large-scale master plan to the Planning Commission and got an approved, an approval to go on to, to the city council. As we sat down with our partners, we took to heart a lot of the comments that we had heard. If you'll remember, we had about 607 units on that. They were all, they were, there were eight buildings and they were five stories high. And we had over 1,100 parking stalls. And in short, it was a sea of parking and a lot of repetition in the buildings. And as we sat down with our partners, we didn't feel like this was really good development. So even though we had spent a lot of money in our large-scale master plan with the architect, we actually brought on another partner, Wasatch Residential Group, who has done a fair amount of, of work in the city as well. And we, we redesigned it. And we're, we know it's taken a long time. We've spent a lot of time and effort with, with staff. We really appreciate their patience. I've worked, been working with Adam and with Nate and the city attorney on the development agreement, kind of reworking and making sure the language for the park is good. We had our grand opening for the park. It went really well. We were heavily involved in that. We've also cleared a lot of the weeds, and we kind of helped with the homeless encampment that was happening on our property. So we feel like we've, we've been good neighbors. We're excited about this, this new plan. And I'll go ahead and let Wasatch Residential Group introduce themselves and go over this, this plan.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to our comments.
Good evening. Adam Langford, Wasatch Residential Group, 620 South State Street in Salt Lake City. You, you know us. We've done several projects in Midvale. But I, I thought it might be good just to, to kind of, kind of refresh everyone's memories on, on who we are and what we do. I mean, we've been in the development business since the 80s. We have our own property management company, so we develop, we construct, and we manage all of our own communities. So in this community here, you'll have with, on the property management side, you know, you'd have a staff of 10 to 12. You have a community manager. You have night security. You have a property manager who's really involved in the community. And we do things like cooking classes and Super Bowl parties. And so we're really, it, it's, it's not like a group that's just a developer or they hire a third-party builder and then they don't know who's managing it. We're involved in all of that. And, and, and another thing that's, makes us unique is since we do hold our projects long-term and we are the management company, we, we build capital improvements year one. So we start setting money aside to, to repaint and plant the trees that die and things like that. So just a little refresher about Wasatch and why we're a little bit different. So as far as the site plan goes, we're super excited to partner with Gardner and the Miller Group. And we've done several projects with the Gardner Company, and we work really well together. We have a similar vision. We want great communities that we hold long-term. So what we've done with the site plan is we've kind of flanked the busier roads with these 58-plexes. I don't know if you've got a site plan that you can pull up? Do you have anything from the, the package? I'm sorry, I thought you'd... Just even the packet, the Planning Commission packet?
Can, can you get to the Planning Commission packet?
Page 186.
I can drop it in the presentations folder. I'll do it already now.
It's probably helpful if you can see what I'm talking about. I looked up and I was like, oh, wait, you can't see what I can see.
We just have visions of what it was originally.
Okay. Well, we want to replace that with the new project.
I could pass my...
I just put that.
So there's a black and white site plan or a colored plan in there, either one?
I prefer the colored one.
The color, I was going to say the color plan looks nicer. Thank you.
I want something pretty.
Yes.
Always difficult.
Yeah, it's easier to be like, okay, this is green grass. This is parking.
This is where the pool is.
Yes, this is the pool, exactly.
So do you have, it's like an HOA?
So there's no HOA. We run everything. So we do background checks, we do financial, we do like a criminal background check. Yeah, there's no HOA, but we manage everything. I mean, and, and some things we get pretty strict on. You can't fill, like the 58-plexes have garages. You can't fill your garage full of garbage and then park, not garbage, things.
Stuff.
As stuff, and then, then park in the driveway. You can't fill your balcony with a lot of things either. So we, we regulate all that kind of stuff.
Nice.
Yeah. But what's nice is the community manager really gets to know everybody and their cars and their dogs and all that kind of stuff. And so we really try to make it more of a community feel.
Is that a higher position for you guys?
It is, yeah. And, and there's, so there's a...
Do they live there?
Pardon? Sometimes they do. And sometimes the maintenance, so there's the community manager, there's leasing agents, and there's maintenance. And sometimes a lot of those people will live in the community.
Yeah, it makes it...
Yeah, that makes it easy, right? Oh, it's okay.
Mine's the loading from an hour ago.
Yeah. I couldn't worry about it any longer. I just closed it and said, okay, I'll wait till I get there. It just kept spinning, driving it all. It's because it was colored.
And where, whereabouts is this up pretty big?
Yes, after the transportation.
Page 186.
Yeah, so I was going to say, yes, 186 in the PDF is the color plan. Yeah, no.
Do I plug in or?
I don't know.
Is there an HTM I've been on?
Yeah, you're good.
Yeah, I also want to plug in.
Contest.
It's a race.
Dave, do you have it up? Cause he needs to submit the input if you want to do it from your laptop.
Yeah.
We've got it up here if that helps. There we go.
It wasn't that easy.
All right, and then, how does? Oh, there we go.
It's like one minute.
So you've got Ivy across the top here on the north, and then Bingham Junction Boulevard. And then this is Sagini. So this entire thing, we, we'll be coming in with large-scale master plan. But as far as the site plans go and those individual approvals, this is phase one here, and this is phase two. Okay, so.
So you'll build your amenities first?
Yes.
And then move on to the other phases, not start with your second phase and then figure out when you'll put the amenities. Not start with your second phase and then figure out when you'll put the amenities in?
Yeah. We, no, and, and that's one nice, another nice thing about us is even within this, you know, on, sometimes when you have a for-sell product, they'll start with one building. They gotta sell this out, then I gotta move to this one and sell that, and then they have enough money to do this. So this is one phase here, and we literally start here and we roll through the whole thing.
Now, are those, the outer ones, are those townhomes?
Yeah, so I'll walk through the, so this is a three-story townhome, rear-loaded, so garages on the back with driveways. And then what you get is these front doors, and each unit has a balcony on the front. So you, you walk in and you've got a coat closet, and then you can get out to the garage and you go up to the main living, and that's where the balcony is that looks out over the front, and then the bedrooms are upstairs.
Can you park in the driveways?
Yes.
Okay, so there's enough room.
But obviously, they're specific to that unit. Yes. No, we, most of us...
It's not a three-foot driveway.
Well, I was gonna say, most of us, good or bad, we drive trucks, and so we kind of have this joke that, yeah, the F-150 is our footprint that we, even on the garages, we ended up, over the years, we've oversized the garages because we got kind of a truck mentality, good or bad. Yeah, so you've got these three-story units, and I'll flip here through the, to the elevations, but it's more of a modern flat roof. One thing we also did on Sagini is, I know I've been in here before, and this came up with this group and with city council, is north of Ivy, Sagini is kind of weird with the parking. And so what we've done here is we've obviously continued, you know, you've got the intersection that lines up from this, Sagini continues, but we're gonna stripe the on-street parking, and then we have little pop-outs of trees or vegetation. So to kind of, yeah, calm it down a little bit, and also give the cars an actual striped parking spot. So I think that'll really help to improve the look, the function of the street, and then you've got...
Is that public parking?
So it's, it is public. It's a public road. We're not counting it as any of our required parking. We've got everything on-site that's required. So yes, anybody can park there, but the idea is, I mean, somebody, if they come to visit here, they'll probably park there. But yeah, it's public, it's, it's not a private street. But, but you get, you know, a three-story unit with the front door and the balcony facing that road too. So you get a really cool urban experience is what we're trying to create on a road that functions right.
I like the bump-outs to make it warmer and more inviting than just a bunch of street parking.
Yeah. And, and it'll also make it nicer if pedestrians want to cross Sagini. It won't seem so busy and...
It won't look like, what's that street by Moda?
I don't know.
Millennium?
Millennium?
I think it's Millennium.
Yeah, where it's just streets of parking.
Gotcha. Yeah, so we, we did, we took the comments from here at city council and what we've experienced with our communities north of Ivy and kind of designed this road that way. And then you've got these big 58-plexes here, and they also have garages on the back and driveways that are all usable. Like I said, we overbuild the garages. But what's really neat about these is the, the shape of these allows these courtyards here. And then we, we create kind of a courtyard plaza for these, the tenants here, the community that's in this building. So we'll do like a barbecue pit and an eating area, or you do like a gas fire pit and just a cool gathering space. And then each one of these buildings has their own. And then you've got this center here that's got a totlot, two pickleball courts, we got a dog park up here. We really pride ourselves on our pools and our pool deck. This is a, a large community, so we, this, we've designed this building here, it's in, it's a little over 8,000 square foot clubhouse. So it's, it's very large, it's two stories, but yeah, really cool pool deck, great pool space, we've got cabanas and things like that. So we, we really are, we like to call our renters renters by choice. There's lots of options out there, and there are people who don't want a house, they don't want to mow the lawn, they want to lock and leave and go on vacation, and so that's who we're catering to. So this is a, a nice higher-end project.
Now, all, all the units don't have covered part, covered the garage parking, that's just added.
Correct.
But they're, you're not charging for parking?
Correct.
Except for if you get a garage?
Yes, but it'll be...
Then there'll be an add-on package.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so, yes, that's exactly right.
So again, it's not like Moda, where if you want to park in your community, you have to pay extra?
No, no, you, you can, you either get a, most of our surface...
Is all of our surface gonna be covered?
They'll be not covered to offset the garages.
Gotcha. So everybody will either get a covered, you know, covered stall or a garage option.
Okay.
Yeah.
Also, there'll be a lot of covered.
Yeah. But the garages are nice, because like you mentioned, each garage has a driveway too. So you can park in the driveway, or sorry, in the garage, and your visitor can park in the driveway, all, you know, within your own space, so...
If your garage isn't full of junk, I mean, stuff.
It's junk. I've seen those garages.
Well, and, and unfortunately, with a lot of HOAs, you get that. But, but with us and our management, we have full control over that. So you, you can't fill it with stuff or mementos or whatever, and...
It's harder to evict in an HOA than your landlord.
Yeah, we've, yeah, we get really good tenants that way too. And, and, and most of the time, people don't want junk on everybody's patio, right? So they all are like, okay, we can clean it up, we don't have stuff everywhere. But if we need to enforce it, we can, and we have the rights to do that with our contract. We can, I don't know, Dave, if I can scroll down. Actually, I don't remember if... Well, I was gonna go through the, get to the elevations real quick, but I don't remember if they're up or down in the PDF.
Maybe the 3D view.
Oh, the 3D view is really cool too.
So elevation starts on page 183.
183, okay. Yeah, no, that's good. So this, this gives you an idea of, so this is the 58-plex, so it's a four-story with elevators. You've got your patios here, and then you have patios that look down onto this courtyard here like I was talking about. So it really, you, you've got the primary open space and amenities here, and then you've got these sub-areas for these buildings. So instead of just having one area where everybody's kind of crammed in there, you, you create these sub-open space areas, and it functions really well. And then you can see, so this is the townhome, the three-story townhome. This is the, the balcony on the, the main living space here. But it, it's more contemporary architecture, flat roofs. The clubhouse really is cool. It's got two levels and a big balcony area. And then what we've started doing with our gyms is you have an outdoor area, so you can go out there and run around, lift weights, flip tires over, all the kind of stuff that people like to do.
Where is another project like this?
So there's a similar clubhouse down in, at the point of the mountain, called Embold. So you could go down and look at that, it's very similar. This, this is very similar to, we've done a project in Draper like this. This with the, the balcony here on the main floor, have we done that before? Because it used to be up above.
Yeah, that's an option. I'll do that in projects we've done.
Yeah, so this is new. This is very similar to Park View to the north. We've done this out in Draper, so you can go out there and see it and walk it.
I like the feel of it being a place you can live and entertain guests rather than just a large complex of apartments. You know, you could, you could rent out the facilities and, and have family and friends over and not have to...
Yeah. And our residents do that a lot, yeah, birthday parties, a lot of people do it for Thanksgiving or Christmas parties. In fact, that Embold project at the point of the mountain in Lehigh, I drive by there sometimes to get home, and there's bistro lights out here and people at night, and it's really cool to see the space being used the way we designed it instead of driving by and nobody's out there.
What's your occupancy percentage for some of those others that you highlighted? From this other development? So you, you highlighted one down in Draper.
Yeah. Like, what are we occupancy right now? Well, we can't stabilize the project with the bank unless we're mid to high 90s. So that's typically where we're at on all of our projects. Yeah, the management team sets goals and they're pushed to, to fill that, because, and that's, it's a good thing, right? If, if it's not parked right, if there's not the amenities, if the management team isn't right, people aren't gonna live there. So yeah, we, we work really hard at that. But yeah, we're mid 90s. So yeah, we'd love any comments or ideas or, well, we're super excited about this project and teaming up with Gardner. I think it's a great site.
So phase two, it seemed like there was what I would call a general lack of guest parking, other than the driveway. I wondered, is that like a design choice or is that just the minimums? I know you guys highlighted that there's garage and then driveway parking.
Oh, there you are. There we go. I feel like I'm at home trying to get my kids to, how do I use the remote, you know? I'm out it. So the parking, Eric might be able to talk. Are you talking just surface parking?
Yeah.
Yeah. How does this park?
Yeah. I'm Eric Winters with Wasatch as well.
Eric does a lot of our design work.
I, yeah, I've been designing this like 400 times now.
Is that all?
Thank you.
But I, I feel like we finally got to a point where we all love it. So, but yeah, there's, every, every townhome, even in phase two, has the driveway parking. So you're essentially four stalls per unit at that point.
How many bedrooms on per unit?
What's that?
How many bedrooms in each of those units?
There are three on the end units and two in the middle units.
With four parking spots, okay.
Yeah, and so you've got a two-car garage on every unit, and then you've got a driveway as well. So, but then there are parking stalls, kind of broken in.
Yeah, there's a few surface here and here, but...
They're, they're sporadic throughout, but...
But to have your own driveway, two-car garage, two in the driveway.
Especially your four, so it's, as you count it up, it's a huge amount of parking.
Well, and you got that street that people can park on. They're going to visit.
The general public's likely not gonna park there to just hang out, so it's usually gonna be people visiting that are using that. I'd like the idea of putting those parallel parking in, because with the bump-outs, you've got a tree most likely in it, so it will be a visual distraction to keep you from going fast through those areas. And just the natural curvature of the road, I think, is a good traffic calmer as well.
And to keep people from parking on the corner.
Right, yeah.
That's true, to keep the visibility clear.
Yeah, so you've got visibility, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, and I guess one thing else to note on this is, so you've got the townhomes that face the road, and they're three-story, so it really kind of frames that road. But then also, the neat thing about the rear-loaded townhomes is you can face them, you can have the fronts face each other, and then you kind of create this common courtyard area here and landscape that really nice. And so that kind of becomes an area where people go and get their mail, and they see their neighbor, and you can stand there and talk and just kind of, like I said, we're trying to create these kind of sub-spaces instead of just one big area. So these are a great little area where people see their neighbor and talk, and we've done amenities in those too before, do big concrete planters or places where people can sit.
They can have the harvest days block parties there.
There you go.
Is Sagini, is that gonna be a city street?
Yes.
Yes. Sagini currently hits Ivy and stops, and it's now an extension of it all the way to Bingham Junction.
Yeah.
What are you guys doing in snow for maintenance?
We actually have to provide a snow removal plan as part of our plan. Oh, where do we actually put, like?
That's always the question.
Yeah, the very ends of a lot of those get pushed.
You push it, yeah. Yeah, you'll see like at the end of this run of, yeah, like right here and right here, but it is a good point.
It's not really as snow as part of the balcony.
Yeah. Yeah, because it hasn't, it hasn't stopped the last two winters.
Don't say that, we're gonna have a bad winter. Don't say that.
No, and that's another nice thing, is that's, we manage that.
Yeah.
Well, I do appreciate the diversity that you kind of shied away from all one building type or unit, and you've kind of diversified a little bit. I do appreciate that, because not everything suits every family, so...
Yeah, people want, there's a different, yeah, some people want a townhome, and a single person might just want a stacked flat.
On phase two, is that the portion that overlooks the other condos that are already built?
This does drop quite a bit, right?
Yeah, but phase three is actually something we've gotta figure out later, because the soil conditions in there kind of limit what...
That would be phase three.
Yeah, that's actually further south.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so you'd have phase three in the south of this, and then the homes, homes.
Down off the shelf.
Okay. Because that was kind of a concern to have a five-story building on this bluff, and so it looks like you have a 20-story building looking down on these poor little condos.
Yeah.
We've, we've definitely have some limitations on that portion of the property that we've gotta get creative with, so...
Okay. I, I, I'm really excited about just that it's, like I said, it's a livable space, not just an apartment complex. You know, it's, it's very, yeah, it, it's a place that you can live and have guests and have parties and have social activities as a family rather than nothing.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate the evolution, so...
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments? Big now? Doesn't look like it.
So you'd love it, that's what we'd like to hear.
Thanks for the effort and coming out.
Thank you. This is so much, so much more exciting.
Yeah. It'll be a wonderful project.
Yeah. Dave, Dave did a good job at listening.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Next up, we have staff updates and other business. Yeah, I see that book. This book he's carrying around.
It's our bedtime story. Here we go.
Thanks, Vindalyn. Thank you. A few meetings ago, we talked about kennels in, in a commercial context, like a business you can go to, drop off your dog. And Liz looked at that a little bit and has a little report for you.
In short, it's the only place that we allow commercial kennels are in commercial zones, and so that would be in our RC and our clean industrial zone. And it didn't seem to us to make any sense to not allow outdoor dog runs in those areas, but just wanted to make sure that was also the commission's thoughts as well. So we don't, we don't allow commercial kennels anywhere outside of our high commercial area and then our industrial area, so...
I forgot about that.
No, it makes sense to me.
Yeah. I think we were only discussing it last time because the applicant had proposed it in the TOD, and that got close to residential, and I think that's why it cropped up.
And we all went, no.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, I mean, that seems reasonable.
Unless you guys say otherwise, we won't pursue that text amendment any further, so... Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that research.
Now, next, the book that you got last time, the ones who are real interested in mine, you have probably already finished it.
You know it so well.
I have read it.
You have?
I have read it and been to his classes when I was first put on.
Very good. So then, whatever is in pages...
Have you spelled nerd?
Although...
A and E.
Although it is...
Well, we'll try...
Very basic, very basic.
Okay, read us a bedtime story. Here we go.
Well, my intent was to ask you to read the first couple of chapters, and then at the next meeting, we'll discuss it.
So is that two? The first two chapters?
Yeah, the first two chapters. If all of you say, you know, 14 pages is not enough, you can also do the first three or so.
I think that was an Oprah book reading for this week anyways.
It was.
Oh, yeah. You're following the Oprah Book Club?
Reese Witherspoon, me, thank you.
Well, Oprah's doing it, then we can do it.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll do an Oprah-style book club.
Cars for everyone.
All right. So next time, we'll have a little, I guess, seminar about this. How's that?
Just... Discussion?
Discussion.
Training. It's training.
I hear Robin is leading that discussion.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I teach Sundays.
When we tell them, when we say Dustin is.
Hey, Dustin's not here. Won't make him.
Yeah.
If you ever want him to come again, you won't make him.
All right.
And I think what would be helpful is when when you look through it, if you have questions, to to really take a note of them and bring them to the meeting. That's probably the most helpful in in this. So
I like it.
Then I wanted to ask those of you who went to the conference about any experiences or lessons or anything that you have learned that you would like to share, and especially if there's anything that you think as a city we should be looking at, maybe incorporating.
One thing that I noticed, we took a tour of downtown Main Street of Provo.
Yeah.
And it was really interesting because they had these codes where it had to be stepped back from Main Street. But it didn't always work because the corners, the corner lots, like they had these old restored buildings that had a big three-story tower on the center that looked really cool. But then they had another project that was on the corner, and that three-story tower had to be set back. And it looked, it looked bad. It looked awful. And so that was one of the things that they kind of wished that the city had changed their zoning, that if it was a corner, it didn't have to be stepped backed. Just in the middle of the block, it had to, so it doesn't take out the lighting and overpower the street and stuff. And that made a lot of sense. And so that that really struck with me that of how you zone for things, how sometimes that inflexibility becomes a problem.
Yeah. And we have, you know, in our form-based code, I mean, we've seen that that sometimes you may have to go back and make some changes in order to get the outcome that you're looking for.
Yeah.
Yeah. For mine, I I want to talk to Aaron about one of the things, but because I don't know how legal it is for me to talk about it from up here. So I'll reach out to him on that. But the other thing, I did a tour of the new Provo Sports Complex, which is out by their airport, which they're expanding their airport. They talk about it all the time. But they they do incessantly. But I went out to the sports complex, and they have just opened it recently. And they have fifteen full-size soccer fields constructed currently.
Fifteen?
It's huge.
But aren't they going to have like twenty-six soccer?
They're gonna have twenty-one total soccer fields. They're gonna have forty-five pickleball courts.
Oh, my gosh.
And looking for national competitions to be held there.
You're stealing my thunder. So
Geez, limelight.
They built them not just for their city, not just for the leagues that they currently have, even though they have a lot. And that's going to take a lot of pressure off their current fields, which are at schools and that sort of thing. But it is to help to help maintain the project. It's to bring in national events. So they've already hosted two national soccer events. The kids fly into the Provo Airport, and they just, the fields are right there. So they're going to be doing, they've been talking with the pickleball association to have tournaments at their facility. So it's an interesting way to look at parks and rec, not just to serve your community itself, but to help bring in that as kind of a tourist thing. They're trying to get more hotels around there. And because there's no place to eat out there now. They tried to arrange that while they were in the planning of the sports complex, and none of the hotels would kind of buy in until it was built. So now that they can see how popular it is, it's kind of turned into a cash cow for them. So
Do you remember what that, it seems like they said something about what their revenue was that they're expecting to come?
It was numbers, and those don't stick. So I memorized fifteen, so I was pretty proud of that.
That's a
But it's a different way to look at parks and rec if you have the room in your city.
But think about the revenue for the city.
Exactly. It's bringing in more than just the the fee that they're charging. It's bringing in ancillary taxes.
Think if they have food trucks.
They they do have an organ, they have paired with food trucks.
Until they
Yeah, no, they don't want to get any concessions. They said they'd rather deal with the sports. They don't want to deal with the food. So they're relying explicitly on the food trucks.
Smart.
So they reach out to all the food trucks in Provo. They have a sign-up list. They go, okay, this is the day we're having an event, sign up. And then they have all of the infrastructure for the food trucks to just plug in.
Brilliant.
Yeah. So it's it's pretty cool. If you're ever down there, I've never wanted to spend time in Provo, but the sports complex was pretty cool. Yeah, that's what I learned.
I mean, the pictures they showed us, that thing is going to be humongous when it's completed.
It's giant. They had to do a lot of soil remediation, even though it's just play fields. They, I think they said they added six to eight feet of soil in some areas.
Is it funded by the city?
Uh, yes, and I think with grants. They paired up with some other projects that were going on, too. They were remediating their river. So some of the soil from the river ended up helping with the sports complex.
Wow.
Yeah. And it was eighteen years in the making. It took a really, really long time for them to get it built. So other phases are still being constructed. Yeah, so that was really cool.
It was interesting. We did a tour of Sundance.
Yeah.
And it it reminded me of our art center here on Main Street, because what they do with all of their wine bottles and all of their glass is they recycle it and recast it as a new product. So bowls and glasses and martini glasses, all these things. And then they sell them in their their art shop. And so it was really interesting how they made. And so as a visitor staying at Sundance, you can go and learn how to blow glass and make something. And then they sell things from the, I guess they bring up, because I guess recycled glass is a lot harder to work with than your sand or whatever. And so they bring artisans from Mexico that come up for a six-year visa and rotate them out so they can teach how to how to do that. And I thought that was really interesting. And it reminded me kind of of the art center that how to kind of redo what you do.
Very good. Were there any broader themes at the conference? I mean, the legislature has talked about housing a lot. Was there anything in the conference in that regard that you
The keynote this year talked a lot about helping the Unsheltered. I forget where what his organization is.
Yeah, I can't remember.
But they also have a moving company incorporated. It's a rehabilitation.
The Other Side.
The Other Side, that's the name of it, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So he was talking about their programs and and kind of how they're invested in the community. And it's not just about housing, but all different facets of it.
So they're making a tiny community with tiny homes for the homeless. That's more of a long-term
Rehabilitation.
Rehab.
Yeah. They're talking about how they've partnered it with different businesses to help be self-funded. So you're not asking the community for the money. They're they're working towards their own rehabilitation. Yeah.
And actually, I think they have been at one of our events on Main Street in the Art House. I think they had a one of the stands in there.
Yeah, the Other Side is a pretty robust program.
Yeah.
And it's really hard to duplicate just because of their model of how they get their employees that are graduates from the program. So you have a very limited supply of people that can actually do it because they're promoting from within. Yeah.
They don't have paid psychologists and stuff like that. They have people who've been through the program, and everybody calls each other out when someone's struggling and calls them out. And we'll vote them out if they have to. But they have a, what was it, a ninety, ninety-five percent success rate? It was astronomical, but it's it's a
Right.
interesting program that it they, it's hard to expand.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's another great conference.
Yeah, it was really good.
Oh, great. Thank you for going, and thank you for sharing what you what you saw.
Thanks for letting us go.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. I will let the city council know.
Yeah. Well, and then Midville also won two awards. So
Oh, yeah.
So that was nice. We were honored with, I think, one of the higher ranking awards. The I know that Adam presented it at city council.
Yeah.
Yeah, the the highest award was the Beehive Award, and that's awarded to the nominee that received the most points in scoring. And so that was the highest award. And Midville won that for the Main Street. And then we got it for our TOD master plan between West Jordan and Bingham Junction here. And so we shared that award with them. And so that was exciting. I volunteered on the nomination committee or the voting committee, whatever they called it. And so I was really excited to hear them, but then found out that I couldn't vote for them because Nevada actually voted for ours, and we voted for Nevada. And so that was that was kind of even more exciting, that these strangers theoretically recognized the benefit, you know, what Midville has done.
Yeah.
And that was really exciting.
Yeah.
So.
Well, thank you. We have one more item, and that has to do with Aaron. This will be his last planning commission meeting.
Is the commission ending? What? I don't understand.
Yeah, exactly. The planning commissioner's
The legal part of that. I think legally, you can't do that.
It's complicated.
I would not, for sure.
Yeah. So what's going on?
No, I I've accepted a job at Orem City, doing what I do here, but for them.
You will be very missed.
Yeah, we're gonna be
It's it's a bittersweet thing. It's a good opportunity for me, but also, you know, Midville's treated me really well. And appreciate having got to know all of you and friendships and all that. And it's, yeah, so certainly sad in that way.
So will you be helping train your replacement, or we're just going to have to train them?
You're gonna have to train them.
Awesome. I love the challenge.
This is gonna be rough.
Ouch.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
And we're gonna miss you. Thank you for your ability to be available and take phone calls.
No problem.
And put up with us.
I don't call you.
His phone still works.
Yeah, it doesn't turn off now that he's in Orem.
All right. Thank you, Fendelyn. Was there anything else we needed to talk about? No.
I didn't have anything.
I move that we adjourn the meeting at seven
Nineteen.
Nineteen PM?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're good. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Aubrey.